Let's call the meeting to order at 6:30. Late on time tonight. Second order is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on August 28th, 2018.
So motion, second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the next item was continued from last month, or last meeting. John Morrison from Connecticut Signs wants to come on up and have a seat.
I don't hear.
John.
Dwayne Gates.
Hi, Dwayne.
And I think we'll have Robin up here, but might as well come up now or come up later,
whichever. Just because Robin was, I think, directly involved in this conversation. Okay. John, you got the floor.
Thank you. So I have an email that I had sent to Angus, copying an email that I sent to Essex Savings Bank on February 26th of 2016. This goes back a fair amount of time, and Angus and I have been talking about this for pretty much since I closed on the building. So I purchased the building at 500 Industrial Park Road from the town. It was an incubator building that I think was a project of Dick's from the very get-go. I walked the property with Dick the day they passed. We left there after an hour and a half of walking around. Had pie, the Carol made here in the afternoon, and that was leading right up to our closing. I think that was Good Friday.
That was Good Friday, yeah. Was that 2015 or 2016?
That was 2016.
2016, yeah.
So prior to that, prior to Easter, on February 26th, having no idea that this was going to ever be an issue, I sent an email to Essex Savings Bank, which states that here is a... so this is to the mortgage officer of the bank. I said, "Here's a copy of the land card for the 500 Industrial Park Road. This is given to me by Dick Smith. With his explanation, I had the assessor back out all the lot except for the 9,000 square feet of property under my building. Our agreement is that the property tax will apply to the building and the land under the building only for the entire terminal lease, and that the current amount of this equals $8,283 in property tax per year." The way I read the land lease terms, it says I'm responsible for the property tax for the entire parcel. This needs to be corrected in the land lease. So I was submitting to them, for my mortgage approval, a copy of the land lease, and I was letting them know that there were some changes that were going to be coming in that. So when they evaluated it, they knew it wasn't the same thing we had at the closing. I'm also attaching a copy of the draft lease from the town with the corrections that I made on it. I told Dick Smith that I wanted Essex Savings Bank to review the lease, as well as Fran Toblo, and then meet with him to finalize corrections. Dick said that there was no problem, he seemed to be eager to accommodate the corrections, and on the same page of the meeting as to what was discussed. He then mentioned that the term of the land lease was 75 years, which we're going to change to 100. That did get done. So then, the day that I made... well, I don't know when I first saw the property. I drove by the property and saw a sign that was Mark Ryer's Real Estate Company with the for-sale sign. I called Mark. He emailed me a listing. And in the listing, it was on Site Finder, which is like a commercial property website, it listed the property. It said that there was a five-year tax abatement, so no property tax for five years on the building, was what was in the original listing. And on January 18th, when Mark and I met with Dick in the conference room over there, Dick said right from the jump that that was a mistake, that the listing was supposed... that the purpose of selling the business... of selling the building was to, in fact, put it on the tax rolls. And that there was... that it included stone plowing and some other things that went with the property that were in the lease, but that the tax abatement was not part of the deal. He did two things, because that tax abatement was around $50,000 of tax over the five-year term. So we were leaving the number that I was offering, that the town was going to bring to the selectmen to accept, because on January 18th, that was just Dick. It still had to come to this board to be voted on. So Dick basically said, "Let's figure out what we can do to get closer on this." And Mark and I sat in there. Dick left. He came back 10 or 15 minutes later with this piece of paper. And this piece somewhere on it has the print date. If I'm wrong, it was the 20th. The print date of this form with the number that I referenced in that email on February 27th, again, a couple months before Dick had passed, was the date of my offer. It was the date that I made, that I wrote out the deposit check for the property, and it was at our meeting there. And Dick had brought this in, and he explained to me that this was backing out from the original price of $10,000 in property tax to an $8,283, and that that number would project over, you know, that discount of a couple grand would go through many years of the lease and be... make up for that five-year tax abatement. I didn't ask Mark to come tonight. He did say, well, he told me a year ago that he remembered all this and agreed with all of it and would be happy to come here and vouch for it. I met with Robin after I spoke with Angus about this. My recollection is that Robin said that this is her handwriting, that Dick came in regularly and asked for notes of different things, and she had no idea what it meant or what was promised. She couldn't make any, you know, any assurance.
I could certainly speak to what Dick and I discussed, or what he asked me to do to it, but...
Okay. And she also explained to me, as I recall, that this actually wasn't the number for just the building, as I thought it was. It was a number, I think, of the building and the parking lot, maybe?
There's two different factors going on. If you'd like to finish, or whatever you'd like me to jump in.
Sure, absolutely. So when I knew that there was a discrepancy, again, we didn't close on this until April 15th of that year. So I knew, leading up through Easter, that there were some discrepancies here, and this was one of them. When we met with Jane... is it Smith?
Marsh.
Marsh. To address each of these issues, I was saying that the land lease had to be 100 years, it says 75. That got corrected. I was saying that the land lease described the property in its entirety, and that Dick had explained to me that this was going to be the number. And Jane Marsh told me that they had already adjusted it, that the description in the lease was accurate, and that the property, it's one piece of property. It has my building, it has the building that Viking is on, it has the building that Dennis somebody has, the third building aligned. And that this number represented my portion of it, and that that was the correct number for the way the description was. And I think that she, you know, I don't think she was trying to mislead, I think that she thought that that was what that was. And then, it was right after we closed. When we closed, I was on cloud nine, because I bought the building after being rent for 30 years. And I literally woke up at like 4 o'clock in the morning, and I... there was some number that was off, that the number for the tax escrow was not what I thought it would be. I had written a check for, you know, $1,000 more than what I had calculated, and I didn't really know why. And I went back and said, "I think it's because this number isn't right." And then I really dropped the ball. Angus and I spoke about it. He said it wasn't something that you can make a decision on, or any promise as to what the outcome would be. The sale is done. It's recorded. This is, you know, what's done here is more binding than my claim, and I understand that. But I do, I know what we discussed and what it was based on, and I think that the intention that Dick had and all of our intentions was for this to be the accurate number. I think that's what Mark Ryer also thinks, and the three others were the people that were there.
Well, that's, I think, for me, that was the biggest concern. And that's why I asked Robin.
Sure.
She's the closest in the town hall who was still involved, and she could speak to the handwriting, you know, to what she wrote down there and why. My involvement was really pretty far after the fact. I think we started speaking, as you said, towards the end of February. I thought it was actually in March when we started. It was after, it was Good Friday. It was after Dick had done it, so...
It was, it was probably right after I closed. Well, we met...
No, because we had to meet before, because I signed the lease.
Right. So we met, I addressed this issue with Angus and with Mark Ryer, with Jane Marsh.
And with Jane, right. We all met over there.
To say I want the description changed.
Is this before Dick passed away, or was that after?
No, it was after. I was not involved in this, except for sitting in that chair when Dick brought it to the board selection.
Angus was there at the time, is, I think, acting for selectmen?
Yeah.
In the aftermath.
Yeah, I had not even been appointed for selectmen.
Marsh was there as the realtor, and I was there looking to have several items corrected in the lease.
Right. And Jane was there as the person who prepared the lease.
Yep. Right. And the explanation that Jane gave is that, you know, not to fear, that that number was accurate, and that I wasn't, you know, that the description, as it was written, wouldn't change this, that this number was based on the description, and the description was...
Yeah, that part of it I don't have a recollection of. My recollection is that she had no problem changing the 75 to 100, but that the numbers were what she had been instructed.
I don't think there are any...
Well, this lease is what she had been instructed. You know, the $3,600 per year, and all of the things that come into it.
What I'd like to correct a couple of your statements is, to begin with, the full parcel is like about 3.83 acres.
Okay.
So your, the parcel prior to your final decisions, this parcel carried 2.48 acres. So Dick had instructed me to create the property record card with 1.4 acres, including the entire building, as well as paving and everything else that went about that portion, included in the 1.4. So based on the 1.4, this property record card was created. Then he did come in on the day, must, on the 20th, and asked if you, I'm assuming you had conversations. He said, "If we were to cut the parcel to .7," and he does at least the 1.4, "what would .70 acres bring?" So the only thing, when you're looking at the tax bill, and I know from all of my 26 years here, and then my years dealing with Dick, we could only calculate it at the existing mill rate, which was the 2014 mill rate. So that 14 mill rate was in at 26.28. So these handwritten figures were kind of just a benchmark. We could have never promised what the 15 mill rate would be, nor, you know, what... so I could tell you, this is what the assessment will be at 1.4 acres, full building, all the paving. This is what the assessment would be if we back out to half of that, to the .7 acres, building only, no paving. Which, for what reasons you were making those discussions, I don't know. So when all was said and done, the lease was finalized at 1.40 acres and everything included, and then your tax bill was generated then, based on an established mill rate, which came well after your lease. So, you know, both figures were given to you there, again, noting that that's on a 2014 mill rate.
There's certainly no problems of like a frozen tax rate. The end, my understanding of it was that, you know, the tax going from 10,000 to 8,200, roughly a 20% reduction in the cost, that difference, as of now, you know, what my tax bill is now, it's like 11.5, would probably be 9, not 82. But it would be based on, you know, not the...
Based on acreage.
Based on, right, reduction in acreage and...
Right.
Which is, and that's why I thought the description in the lease was incorrect, but when Jane explained that the, that this was relative to my portion of it, I thought that meant this number, not this number.
Well, and the lease was written up, not with the 2.48 acres, with the 1.4 acres.
Right, but not with the .7 acres.
Correct.
Right. So the .7 had been proposed, had been discussed, numbers drawn up on it, handed to me.
In February or so.
Yeah, on January, on the day that I, on the very day that I made it, you know, that I wrote the check, I think it was a $1,000 check. It was at that time only in office, the town, the town still had to, the selectmen had to vote on, because the town meeting to approve it. So it was all subject to those approvals. But my understanding was that, you know, the, and again, so when I wrote this email to the bank, I was saying, "There's a mistake in here, because it doesn't, it's got too much land on it. It doesn't have the smaller amount that should be there." And when, when I spoke with Jane about it, which I thought was on this, I don't think I met with her more than once, I think it was on that same day, but maybe it was on a different day. It was definitely in her office, and Mark was definitely there. And she explained that the description of the property was specifically to separate it from the rest of the lot and come up with that number.
Calling it 6D, which I think is what it's called there. 6D dash 1.
Yep.
And 1.4 acres. Yes. So that's what this lease, you guys are welcome to look at, that's what this lease describes as that, as it's highlighted right there.
Right.
Yeah. And, you know, I'm not really sure how, or what you're even asking, other than, you know, to get your taxes reduced, but I'm not sure how to do that with a lease that, you know, you had a considerable amount of time to talk about and to review with your attorneys, with your bank, with everything. And this is the same conversation that we've had, I think. It's that I'm not sure how to, how to change it, you know, subsequent to considerably time, considerably past.
There's no, when I, Angus and I talked about this...
We've talked about it.
And my recollection at the beginning was that the lease did say one thing, that you certainly couldn't, you know, it wasn't your decision to make by yourself. You didn't know what the board would say, you didn't know what the town meeting would say. But that if collectively, you know, the perception was that this was, you know, what Dick said and intended and what, and kind of believed what I was saying, that it was worth running it, you know, running it by the board to see. And then, and we've had, we've had a number of meetings and conversations about this.
Yeah.
And I didn't, I didn't push it yet through, and then I said, you know, I gotta, I said to you, you know...
I know.
That they could say yes, they could say no. You know, I'm, the bottom line is, I'm glad that I want the building. I'm glad that I'm in town. Whether the tax is this number or this number, I'm not regretting having purchased the building. I've been renting for 30-plus years.
You're happy.
Really, really.
You're going to be here for 100 more, so...
We've got it, right?
And I don't, I don't think that there's, you know, it was a weird situation. I think that had, you know, had Dick been here when we were coming up on the closing, he would know. He would know what it was.
And that's, that's my concern, is at least two of us weren't around then.
Right.
So we're coming in, in the ninth inning to try to help Angus make a decision or help Robin, and it's tough with not having all the facts. You know, I wasn't, I didn't sit in on the meeting with Mark and Dick and you, and if there was emails from Dick that backed up everything they were talking about, it would be easy. Again, I'm not making a decision either way. I'm just trying to just talk about it.
When I tell Dick it was on the side of the road, he was wearing a gun and directing traffic.
Exactly.
He would, he would...
Or on the sweeper, you know?
He would email me and say, "Meet me, I'm up at the top of the hill, past Olson's."
That's right.
I stand on the side of the road, we'd have a 20-minute conversation and an hour and a half, and it was fun.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, and I think, as I've said to you from the very beginning, is I have nothing to go by, except for, you know, what you're telling me, which I believe was your understanding of what was said. Handwritten notes, what Robin tells me, her conversation with Dick was, and also the lease that was prepared, and really, right up until the time that you and I went across the street, had Richard Smith on it, first selectman, not Angus McDonald.
Right.
So I have to believe that he had seen this. And that's kind of where, that's where I'm stuck, you know? This was prepared by him, for him. There's, you know, it wasn't, I don't think that, I don't think that, you and I did no negotiating. This was a done deal, except for signing the lease.
That's correct. I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't looking for you to change this before the closing, because I thought it was correct, you know, when I, when I asked Jane about it, she had an explanation. So the, the only thing that I can, the best evidence, other than Mark Ryer, who works with the town and was the listing agent, and who also confirms both the fact that the listing said it was a five-year abatement at first, and that we did this in the negotiations the day I made the offer that we agreed on, is that I just happen to have this email from February 26th, you know, about a month after it, which is about how long it took to get the draft of the lease to look at. And I would have absolutely no reason to concoct it, you know, for seeing some situation two years down the road, trying to save two grand a year on the thing. And that was a, and that wasn't even written to the town, that was written to the bank, just trying to let them know the numbers were moving forward.
Did you say I, you copied me on that? Because I'll print it out and take a look at it. I just haven't, I don't, I don't remember that from that long ago. You know, the language, that's it.
Yeah, I reprinted it recently, but I believe I have a copy of the email.
I'll look it up.
Okay.
Look it up.
Okay. Yeah, so that's, you know, I get this been a long time, and I regret for it, I didn't, you know. And again, in the, in the immediate, you know, May or June or July of that year, literally this town was in mourning, and it wouldn't have been the time to come in here to do this, but it didn't make sense to wait until 2018.
Well, 2018 was long, but... And you would have had many conversations about this, and it all kind of spins back around to, you know, I will, you know, we'll have a conversation a little bit amongst ourselves, you know, here at the table, and determine if I want to go, if we want to go over to Jane and have a conversation as to how we can change this, if we wanted to change it, and what the process would be, if that's the way we wanted to go, or if we wanted to, as a group, say, you know, this was a decision that was made prior to any of us really having any, any say. I mean, I had a vote, but we didn't, we didn't get this. We got, just, you know, give Dick. I think it was, my recollection probably would have been to give Dick the authority to close the deal.
Sure, to excuse the deal, yeah.
No, that's okay.
So just for, like, you're paying the higher rate right now. You've paid it for...
Correct.
Yeah. He's paying right now, he's paying out 1.4 acres, which is, which is what the lease is.
I thought, I just wanted to...
Yeah.
Which, and I mean, it is what it is, realistically, and if it hadn't been for, you know, if there'd been a five-year tax abatement, and we hadn't had that negotiation, then that would have been the tax rate. You know, it would have waited five years, and when it kicked in, it would have gone the hole, whatever it was. I wasn't trying to come up with some angle to have less of the property count. It was actually Dick who brought this to the table as, as a way of putting it on the tax rolls and not having it be a transaction that didn't have any property tax for five years, but still having that savings that was represented in the listing. There was a big bowl, you know, five-year tax abatement. But the back, and I don't know where the line would be, but somewhere close to the middle of this is where the creek starts, and the Tim Lee's building is back here. So half of this lot, the building's 50 feet deep, and it's probably in the back, it's about 10 feet to the abatement that goes down.
Yeah, I think we've got a survey or a map of it somewhere we can...
So, I mean, many people pay for, you know, 10 acres when they've got wetlands or whatever in the back of it. But that was also part of why, you know, Dick was, Dick was looking at what the usable piece was. I think he was trying to put together the numbers, but... So I'll say, well, I'll say two last things, and then we'll discuss it. You mentioned that Dick had that, and that he didn't see that. I think it's fair to say, if you weren't the guy signing the lease for 99 years, I don't, I don't think you would notice the 1.4, the 1.2, if it was drawn up that way.
Yeah, I disagree with that, just knowing Dick. I think he would go straight to the numbers.
Okay.
You know, I do think, you know, I don't think he would get into the language in, you know, section four, where just the leasehold improvements and all that stuff, but he would go straight for the numbers.
Okay.
Because that's what Dick did.
The eight-year numbers?
Any number in here that is relevant to the taxes or to any payment, I think he would have gone straight to.
Okay.
I think, it's just based on, you know, my experience with him.
Okay.
What if we do what you've suggested, or any, any of those three of us just have a, and perhaps Robin as well, follow up in town?
Well, yeah, I think we can, we can have a conversation here now, and if we, if we want to, we can table this until we, you guys can take a ride out there, take a look at the site. I could produce whatever mapping we have of the site that shows the building, and should in fact show the stream going through, so you can see all of the things that John's pointed out, we can, we can talk about. I think you should take a look at it. John, for one thing, John has been a great citizen and someone to have here in town. He's, he's, he has not, you know, while he and I come in here and talk quite a bit, he has not been a, you know, anyone who's put any burden on me or the town or anything like that. He's in fact helped us quite a bit, and I think he, his efforts on that property have made that property better looking than it would have looked, as far as putting, you know, the other island that you've put in there, and then all of the improvements that he's made have only been positive. Well, we've got him for another 98 years. But, you know, it's, this is just, it's an awkward situation because of when it came in and when it happened. You know, John's got a lot of evidence, and most of it anecdotal, and we have one thing that's written down, is what's here. So I think we need to talk about it and think about it before just making a decision how to move it forward. And frankly, I've got to talk to Jane and see how to, if we want to make a change, what is the process? So, and Robin can, can put any other information that you, that you want to respond to what you, what John said.
Just adhere to the lease, whatever you need, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's my inclination.
And I do want, that parcel started, just that section at 2.48 acres, so there was definitely some talk along the way that got it to the 1.4, so I don't know if, the full parcel being 3.83 for everything.
Right.
So I just think that's important to know.
No, that's right. And if I chopped down, I think, too, because the other buildings are on that, or the rest of that lot, it would have been...
Right, so 3.83 was the whole thing. Originally, Dick had associated the 2 point with this, this particular lot.
Okay.
And then, in your discussions...
Meaning it was the land went underneath the Viking building?
No, he just ended up drawing, changing the lines to, for this parcel to, from 2.48 to 1.4. Now, how it was configured, this is what's existing now. My point being, John, just that there was definitely conversation to get it to the 1.4 when he had me draw up this, or create the property record card for it.
Prior to the 20th?
For, the 20th for, for you, yes. That acreage was, that's what, what...
How big was the acreage on the, on the larger number, the total number? How big was the acreage?
This is for the, the 1.4.
So is the land card for the 1.4?
Yes, that's what you're looking at right there. That has, that shows the 1.4. That has, that shows the one point four at the previous mill rate, that's where the ten thousand dollar figure came from. One point four, full building, ten thousand.
So the,
Then, right, I, I, I just, I'm, I'm just trying to accentuate the point that there was a conversation that, again, full parcel, three point eight three to two point four eight, to create this property record card for John at one point four with the building with everything. And then a quick conversation coming in saying, what if we cut it to point seven, building only?
So, was this on January eighteenth? If you printed this card, it would not have been one point four?
Correct.
Real estate? Okay, I didn't know that, I thought, I thought this was like the, the record of the property.
No, this was when, when you were determining what amount of acreage to, to cover that, so.
I know you have to rush, you'll have another meeting we want to, alright. Thank you, John.
Alright, thank you. Um, I, I guess it's not really related to this, when the, apparently the property had been listed a number of months before, and it was listed, my building was real estate under the other two buildings going with it. So in other words, if I, if I purchased it,
Oh, gotcha.
I would have become the landlord,
Been landlord for all of them.
For the real estate for the other two buildings. And my understanding is that they, and understandably, the,
Yeah, that listing was with three point eight three acres.
Right, and those owners didn't want, you know, they, they invested in putting up buildings with the town being the landlord, not some guy coming in buying the property.
Absolutely.
So you, you said in the beginning there, when it was first listed,
Yup.
Was listed with a five-year?
Correct, when I saw the listing and called Mark Ryer to talk about it, it was listed with a five-year tax abatement. And then I met him here to present the offer to the town um, with the five-year tax abatement that was in Mark's draft. And Dick was like, was that, that was, you know, and that was a, a public,
I don't think we've ever, yeah, no, I'm just giving a five, right, yeah, but sure, right.
Right, no, they've done,
We've done,
low rents, um, the real estate for a number of years.
And that, that five-year abatement would have brought that ten thousand down to eight thousand?
Yeah, three years.
No, the five-year abatement would have brought the ten thousand to zero for five years.
Okay.
I, I believe that, I just, Mark made a mistake.
Oh, okay.
I don't think that was, I, I don't think that Dick ever would have agreed to that, I don't think that Mark got that listing correct.
Okay.
When he put the five-year tax abatement.
Okay.
That may have been another conversation that maybe he had with Dick. But, but, the first thing Dick pointed out to you was that he wouldn't have done that.
You're right from the get-go.
Well, that's why, I'm just trying to, cause I didn't know if the five years brought it from ten thousand to eighty-two hundred, that's, again, I'm just trying to get,
To be clear, if it was an abatement, it would have brought it from ten thousand to zero for five years, if it was an abatement.
The only abatements I'm ever familiar with that the town has issued were on improvements only, and only have we been allowed through state statutes to do, based on the amount of construction, it would have been like a fifty percent, so we've never zeroed, I'm not familiar, not that there isn't a statute out there.
I'm not, I'm not saying if we did, I'm, I'm saying if the, if the listing, if the way it was listed said it was a five-year property tax abatement, I mean, that was, it, it is in the description, I didn't even have a copy, I should have brought it.
At zero, that would have been fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I'm just trying to,
Yeah.
Where, where did that eighty-two hundred, did it come from?
Eighty-two hundred was, Dick walked into my office after I created this PRC and said, if I didn't have one point four acres here, if I only had point seven,
Then it'd be eighty-two.
Then it would be point seven, and then one other caveat, and building only, for some reason, you guys were talking about pulling paving out. So we did one point seven, I'm sorry, point seven, building only, at the old mill rate, cause that's the only one we had, gave you that amount. And then this amount is what I created the PRC for, with the one point four.
Right, so, and the relevance to me of that is that the, the day that Dick had Robin do that calculation of the point seven was the day I wrote the check for the offer on the building. And that was, you know, where we came to that from.
Yup.
Thank you.
Sure.
Just trying, you know, I'm just trying to gather.
That's all you can do is catch up, and I can't tell you much more than, you know, John, John's information is what I've got, Robin's information, and the lease is, and really is, is what we've got. I don't think Jane was involved very much in the negotiation, other than creating this lease. So what I'm gonna suggest anyway, is that we follow the little outline or that I just laid out, that, that maybe you and Bill can take a ride out, take a look at the site.
Yup.
Formulate any questions that you might have. At our next meeting, we can have more of a conversation, continue this conversation, so we'll just continue what you guys think, what you may have, um, if you've, if you've got any questions, if you wanna copy of the lease, if you wanna copy of any of John's stuff, I'm sure he'll give it to you. And, and just come up with it, I, I don't know which way to go. Uh, I just know that I can't do it myself. I can't just say this is what we're gonna do. So, I, I thought it best, and John agreed, and that's why he's here, that we, we meet as a group here. And if the process is to bring it to the town, I'm gonna bring it to the town, I, I don't know about that, but I'm not, I'm not sure, so. And talk about it, think some more about it, as I said, I, I, as I said really from the beginning, is I'm not questioning your understanding, but I'm questioning the intent of the town. Or no, I'm not question, I'm not questioning your understanding, but I'm also not questioning the intent of the town, because I had nothing to do with this lease, except for making sure that the,
Would it make sense to ask,
That said Angus McDonald instead of Richard Smith.
Without a big,
And that's the pickle that we're in.
Would it make sense to,
Yeah.
To get Mark to come to,
Well, we certainly can have him come in a couple of weeks. You know, um, and I'll see him tomorrow, you know, he's here tomorrow, so if, if it's okay with you, I'll have a conversation with him about it.
Yeah, I'll meet him.
Um, and we'll invite him.
And again, a little, well, maybe two whole years going by, so.
Yeah, so we'll talk, we'll talk again, what I'm gonna suggest anyway, we'll get a motion from you to do it, but we'll table this until the next meeting. We'll, we'll ask, I'll, I'll have a conversation with Mark, you guys can do whatever research you wanna do on your own. And we'll, um, and we'll reconvene at our next meeting and, and and have more of a further conversation.
Okay.
About where we're going, okay?
Yeah, that's fair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Unless you have any other questions about that, thanks for having me.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, so why don't we get a motion to, to table this until next?
I'd like a motion to table that John Morrison, can I get signed? Uh, tax problem.
Until our next meeting, I'll second that?
Yup.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thanks, John.
Thanks, Jeff.
Um, audience of citizens, is there any other business? See someone, no? Bill?
No.
No? Anyone? Bueller? Um, okay, then, uh, having none, uh, I don't, I don't have a whole heck of a lot, I think we're gonna talk, uh, when, next time when we have Bill, I was gonna ask that, we, uh, we have a conversation as our, as traffic control. We're getting an awful lot of people, as we've talked to, periodically around here, think that people are, that, that people are speeding around town. I, I kinda have some thoughts about how we might control it on some of the roads, and maybe throw things around. But also, uh, maybe we can talk about, um, coordinating our speed limits, you know, we've got just the four streets between Bridge Street and here, we've got, you know, twenty, twenty, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-five, I think, so it's, you know, there's, there's inconsistency, and then it goes from, Bridge Street goes from twenty, I think it goes from twenty-five, or twenty to thirty, when it gets, becomes West Bridge Street, so there's, there's maybe a little inconsistency there, maybe we can do, do a survey, but as traffic control, we can say, let's do a survey of what the traffic, what the speed limits are all around town. And maybe we can make them more consistent, make anything inside, inside of, inside the Village District, twenty-five. You know, and, and things like that, but that's, that's really all I wanted to talk about, is introduce that to you guys, give it some thought. And maybe we'll put that on the agenda for the next, next meeting, or, or the one following that. Um, we have closed, we purchased the truck, I think I told you guys that last time. Um, we're working on rebuilding one of the other trucks, that the engine is perfectly fine on, but needed a new body, so that's been purchased and being done now. Um, I'm meeting with DEEP next week, they're coming to town to talk about the landfill.
Closing?
Uh, not the closing of it, but, um, the operation of it, things like the, you know, apparently, they've told me, I don't have any record of it, but apparently we, we, we cannot take leaves anymore. And that was agreed upon quite a few years ago.
Uh-huh.
Um, I don't have any record of that, so we have just been continuing to take leaves. Um, I think we're gonna, I think, at least I'll know this, I'll know this after next week, whether we have to close that, that part of the operation. Things like that is what we're gonna be talking about. Things like the, uh, stormwater management program, which we are completely in compliance with, they just come down to town and wanna talk about what are you doing, they wanna see, see our reports about how many catch basins we've cleaned out and all that kinda stuff.
I do have to, and interrupt you for one sec, I, I do have to say it on record, uh, Kenny's doing Marvel's job at the dump, you know,
Yeah, I've gotten, I've gotten that report, yeah.
I, I went there Saturday morning, he's out on Route Eight, he's shoveling the curb and cleaning it up, and again, those little things like that, uh, people take notice, and I think he should be commended for it, so that's why.
I'm glad you pointed that out, I went up to, I went up to see him the other day, and, uh, I, I just shoot the breeze, and I said, hey, you making the office your own, and he said, oh yeah, and he brought me in there, he's got his own pictures up. It's, it's really becoming Kenny's place. Uh, but along those lines, we're going to, uh, we're trying to find a shed. So, uh, the things like the, the, I don't know, the trading post or whatever you want, the swap shop that's up there, where people come and drop stuff off, but don't throw it in the garbage. Um, if we can find an old shed, if we can find a small shed, we can put them inside, uh, so that they won't get wrecked in the weather. And also it'll clean up in front of the, in front of the bin. Um, you know, and he's got a, a great exchange program there too, you know, so you can bring it in, take it away, bring it back, no charge.
You bring home more than what you bring to the dump.
Yeah, so, um, you know, that's, that's happening, there are some things that, that are catching up to the town, I think that we did, maybe we didn't do properly for, for a long time. Um, and that's catching up with us, but we were unaware, I was unaware that we were not doing it properly, so, you know, I don't think there's gonna be any ramifications, other than we have to start doing it. And I wanna make sure that we point out that does not at all include the Storm MS four program.